It is 6:30. We will reconvene open session and report on reportable action taken in closed session.
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask that you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be given this evening by Councilmember Stowe.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you all would please quieten your hearts and bow your heads with me, please. Oh, preciously heaven Father, I don't understand why you chose to walk dusty roads when you could have been walking paved streets of gold. I don't understand why you chose to hang by a wooden cross when you could be sitting on a throne. But dear Lord, I am so internally grateful. I'm grateful for this community and its members that has been before us and that will come after us. Lord, I pray that the council succumb, that they trust in you, and Lord, give you, give them their wisdom to lead this community for its best interests, but more importantly, for your interests. Thank you, Lord, and I pray to you in the name of the Holy Spirit and the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Is there anyone else that would like to come forth? Not you may, oh, please.
Brock Neely, I'd like to ask thanks for all of our families and all of our military and first responders, and mostly thank God for what he's done for Milt. Milt's been a very strong influence in my life through many years. He didn't know it, but he knows it now. But I also would like to offer a moment of silence remembering all those that died December seventh, nineteen forty-one. Thank you.
You may be seated. We will now move on to the presentations.
Thank you, Honor. We have with us this evening the Leadership Porterville Class of two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to invite them to come forward at this time and introduce themselves under the watchful eye of Class Facilitator Virginia Garola.
Good evening. I'd like to say thank you to Councilmember Stowe. This will be my last presentation in front of you. So it fills my heart. So we served for many, many years together. Tonight, I'd like to bring Leadership Porterville two thousand and twenty-three before you. It's a pleasure to be working with these individuals. I call them young professionals. And they'll be introducing themselves in a moment. As you are aware, LP has been in existence in existence for over twenty-five years. Leadership Porterville has inspired, developed, and connected these leaders to be more involved in Porterville area. The Leadership Porterville Board strives to inspire active and effective involvement through the confidence, skills, and knowledge gained by program participation. Due to conflicting conferences or illnesses, the following individuals were unable to attend this evening. Shaila Franco, who is the Tulley River Tribal Council Resource Clerk. Rosa Guerrero, she's a principal at Burden Middle School. Gracelia Hurtado, who is the Human Resources for the City of Porterville. Jonathan Miranda, who is a Director of Enrollment Services at Porterville College. They'll each introduce themselves, and I'm Virginia Garola.
Hello. Thank you for having us tonight. My name's Dwayne Cornet. I'm a captain with the Tulare County Sheriff's Office. I've been with the agency for twenty-three years, and I used to be the station commander here in Porterville. I recognize some faces from twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ryan Laeger. I'm with the Workforce Investment Board at Tulare County. I'm just thankful to be here tonight and being part of Leadership Porterville. Didn't really know I was going to talk, so. But yeah, just thankful to be here and being a part of the program, so. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Latisha Bradley. I work for Porterville Unified School District as the Program Manager for Expanded Learning, which means that all things before and after school fall under me. So if you have any ideas or anything you want to help Porterville Unified out with, please let me know. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Misty Webb. I am a marketing clerk for Eaglemont Casino. I focus mainly on the social media aspects. I'm, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jared Harness. I work for CRV Medical Center. I am the Compliance Audit Analyst there. I've worked there for eighteen years, and I'm just thankful to be part of this program.
And I'm Bruce Soklough. I'm a lieutenant with Porterville Police Department and currently assigned to investigations.
I encourage anyone who wishes to be part of Leadership Porterville to look forward to the application period, which generally is around June, and then we start around August. It is an incredible program to improve your skills or lift yourself up to become a leader. And I've seen nothing but leaders in the last two years that I've been the facilitator. And I want to thank the City of Porterville for its support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. One moment. You've done an exemplary job. And the transition that has happened in the last couple of years did not go unnoticed. The fact that journeys to the state capitol, meeting with the congressmen, the senators, and people beyond Porterville, and meeting with your council, and going to the different organizations, just as the school districts, because they're all, they all have jurisdictions. And to the leadership class, I've had the privilege and the honor of knowing you at different locations and in what you're involved in. I know that there are maybe three of us on the dais. I know Councilmember Tate was a, one of the graduating classes. Councilmember Stowe, you've been involved with Leadership Porterville?
Involved.
And, and then I have had the privilege and honor in years past to be assigned a mentor and work with someone. It was, that was in years past to that regard, when there were mentors assigned to the students in the program as to their alignments. So I wish you the best. You will learn a lot, and you will learn the operations of those of us that sit on the dais as to what goes where. So. And don't ever hesitate to ask questions because we're here for each of you. Our numbers are always available. Thank you. All right, we'll now go on to the next presentation.
Yes, thank you, Honor. We have with us Mr. Rich Tree, certainly not a stranger to us, but coming in doing, at the request of Councilmember Wyrock and the Vice Mayor in terms of kind of the comings and goings of the TCRTA, also known as the Tulare County Regional Transit Agency.
Thank you, Mr. Adalas. Appreciate it. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council and staff, it's good to be home. And thank you for the invitation to give you a quick update on the activities of the Regional Transit Agency. But first, I do want to publicly and personally thank Mayor Flores for her support over the last couple of months. It has been challenging for the agency, but I appreciate the support from the mayor and councilmembers and believing in us. Want to also thank staff for their assistance. It has been a team effort as, as the agency is starting to mature. And want to recognize that Councilman Stowe, he's been a mentor to me since I was a teenager. And I appreciate all the work, hard work that you've done and just in your public service. So I don't know about you, but my phone gives me updates every morning. And, and this morning, it was giving me memories of different activities. And so Fernando, if you wouldn't mind shifting to the next screen, almost five.
China.
Almost five years to the date was our first trip over to China to see the cities and really the valleys, first electric buses being built. And what an amazing experience. And on the picture on the left is, is your shop superintendent, Mr. Russell Isom, who has just been amazing to work with. And I don't know how he does it, but he's giving it his all, his all to keep those vehicles running. And on the right, I had this wonderful opportunity. I always wanted to check out something new, and one of the places that I wanted to see was the Great Wall, but also the Chinese bamboo forest. And I think that represents, I don't know if you know about like the Chinese bamboo tree, but for five years, they're watered and nothing is produced. You don't see any, anything coming out of the ground. But on the, on the fifth year, it sprouts, and within six weeks, it grows to eighty feet tall, and it's strong. And so it's those first five years that it's really building those strong roots. And I liken, I give you this presentation because you may not have seen a lot of forward-facing activity from the agency, but I definitely will say that the last two years, we've been building a strong foundation. And so it's good to kind of reflect back and, and see those great memories working for the city and continue, hope to continue to work for the city, providing public transportation. And I do want to recognize Virginia. She was a founding member of the agency and was instrumental in getting everyone to agree in coming together for improved mobility for all Tulare County residents. So it's good to see her. And Fernando, so we've, we've done a couple of things to, to help improve the service, highlighting our new route brochures. The cover page gives some helpful information of what the new fares are, how to, how to pay your fare, information on some of the other services we provide, such as ADA paratransit service for seniors and disabled folks, as well as an introduction into the new innovative mobility service. So there's a lot on that first page, and I don't expect you to read through it. It gives me a headache just actually looking at it. But we have these route brochures now in circulation for all, for each of our twenty-seven routes that we now operate throughout the county. And the next slide represents the inside cover, which gives the timetable, the important part of when is the bus going to be arriving at, at the important stops. And then on the left side of the timetable is a map, so you get an understanding. So those brochures are out. They've been updated. They were reflective of all of our services for two thousand and twenty-two. In the next slide, we want to highlight the, our ridership recovery strategy, welcoming, trying to welcome passengers back to use public transportation. So the board in, in two thousand and twenty-one decided, let's just make transit free. Help get back to the community, put a couple of extra bucks in their pocket, but still allow them to ride the fixed route system or the paratransit service. Both services were free. And that ridership recovery strategy worked. Over the year of providing free fares, we did see an increase of nearly forty percent in ridership. Now, we, that campaign has now ended, and we are collecting fares, but ridership really hasn't been affected. They have, they understand that, that the service is convenient and it's reliable, and they're, they're continuing to ride it today even though they have to pay a fare. And speaking of fares, we've been really busy on the next slide of installing new fare boxes. Now, this isn't really new to the City of Porterville. You have been a pioneer in this area. But you are receiving some new upgrades. And so the entire fleet now has these next-generation fare collection system that works throughout the region, both with our agency and the City of Visalia. But what Vis, what Porterville residents will now be able to take advantage of in the next year, this in two thousand and twenty-three, is the ability to use open payments. Everyone, at least myself, I'm finding it more convenient to not have to actually pull out a card. I can just use my phone or, or tap my debit card and use Google Pay and Apple Pay, as well as mobile ticketing. So that's coming to the, to Porterville, but also countywide, this in just a couple of months. You may have been seeing some new vehicles come around, and the next slide is some new micro-transit vehicles. And I will say again, the city has been a pioneer in providing clean, innovative mobility. You, so rightfully so, this community is seeing the, the agency's first branded electric shuttle vans. And so it's good that we're finally getting our name out. I will say that is not our official logo. We are still working with the consultants on that. That process takes so long. I, I am impatient, but I promise you it's going to be good. And micro, I do want to highlight that micro-transit started in Porterville, then it expanded into Lindsay, at Strathmore. It's now available in Lindsay, which is really bringing those residents into, into Porterville for services. And we're starting to see some good ridership come out of, of Lindsay. We do, however, have goals to, by next year, to have this service that started here in Porterville to be expanded countywide. And that is going to be truly exciting to see that unveil. I don't know in the country if there's actually a true county-wide micro-transit service anywhere and being operated by zero emission vehicles. It's going to be something to see. The next vehicle you might have seen driving around is, is actually one of the city's first, our new Flyers, a company that was, again, a US-based company, really a nice-looking bus. It was unveiled actually a couple of days before Veterans Day Parade, and we wanted to take advantage of, I think, the, the history of this community of being patriotic and strong patriotism. And so we were able to quickly wrap them and get our name out there, but also show the, the community's patriotic theme during Veterans Day. Those buses are performing very well. We hope to continue to transition the existing fleet over to zero emission. But those are the first three in, in actually the county, and they're right here in Porterville. And you can see right behind that is actually our original, the city's original battery electric buses, the Green Powers, and we still are operating them in service. And it looks like they've got a watering message ad on the side of it, so that's good to see. Appreciate the support from Public Works Department, Mr. Knight. Inside of the buses on the next screen, you'll see that we have some new features that we haven't provided in any of their vehicles. Everyone wants to be connected, so you're always looking for somewhere to charge your phone, and now you can find it in the bus. Between every seat, you have, we have USB charging ports. And these buses, I think, are nice, fresh, open-looking. They're accessible with priority seating up front, clearly marked for disabled and senior passengers. I think that's important, and we, we want to make sure that's visible. And one feature that you don't see in this picture actually is some very brand-new infotainment screens. So while passengers are riding the bus, they get to see ads and graphical views of where they're on the bus and other important service information. I spoke earlier about branding, although that nice bus wrap and TCRTA micro is really temporary. In the next slide, we, staff has been working nonstop with the marketing firms on creating our brand. So this is a representation of a mood board that we're working through, and I want to tell you that staff has really gravitated towards those bright and vibrant colors and being energetic. And this will set the stage for everything that we, as we communicate with the community. It will be showing our excitement about this trans-agency and the, the services that we provide. We hope we'll be unveiling our new logo and color scheme and fonts here in a couple of months. We also have some improvements under the hood, is what they say, when it comes to website improvements. On the next slide is just letting you know that we do have a domain. It's goTCRTA.org finally. And we have a home for that where we will be consolidating all of the transit information into one place. We appreciate the, the member agencies continuing to keep their information live and up to date. But very soon, we're going to be having our own website. And within that website, we will have lots of tools to help you plan your trip. And the next slide, Fernando, is one of the new technologies that is being deployed as we speak. It's called Tripshot. You can download the app and get real-time bus arrival information. You can also plan out your trip. So that is the, the service. And then finally, I did want to recognize that, you know, the agency's growing in, as, as members, and we want to recognize our newest member, the Tulley River Tribe of California. And so the, the last slide, Fernando, is just, we are continuing to partner with great agencies willing to play our part. There's, again, a history of this community partnering with the Tulley River Tribe. We want. Uh, we want to do the same, offering assistance in their planning of their tribal transit service. They've got a new casino that I'm sure many people will want a ride out to and we're looking forward to working with their staff and planning out that service and really reimagining, um, uh, what tribal transit service will look like in the coming years. So I thank you for your time. Allow me to give a quick update and, uh, wish you all happy holidays.
Oh, thank you for, thank you very much for your presentation. Just remember going back down memory lane, the conversation began, as far as I can remember, in 2016 when it was a discussion at a TCAG board meeting to see the vision of a county transit agency to where it is now. There's been a lot of growth and they are fortunate to have somebody like you and you're always welcome to come back.
It is good to be home, Mayor.
You're always welcome. There's been a lot of strides and the partnerships are growing, so it's been an investment. But Porterville has always been right on top as being the trendsetter. It started with the buses, with the zero emission of green power. So thank you for everything. I know, uh, former council member, Mayor Virginia Gorilla was in those stages because they were the seed, they planted the seed for the table to move it grow. And I came in shortly after the buses were in place. So there's a lot of history to that. Thank you.
Yes, Rich, if I may, you've done an outstanding job with this and, you know, got them going and they're on their feet. Now you're ready to come back with this. Okay. You got them going. Now, now you, now you can come back home and, you know, you got them upstart.
I mean, really come back home. Thank you very much. All right. We will now go into oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items not scheduled for public hearing at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. If you are here for the public hearing, item number 11, please hold your comment until such time that item comes up on the agenda. You will be given the opportunity at that time to speak on that item and, uh, you'll be asked to state your name and address for the record under oral communications on the public hearing. I would like to emphasize that, uh, the three-minute per speaker time period will be adhered to so that city council can continue in an orderly fashion, proceed with its scheduled decision-making responsibilities. Is there anyone that would like to come forward right now under oral communications?
Brock Neely, address on record. Um, I just would like to take a moment to thank Milt for all of the service to the community, both to the kids, you know, his athletic abilities, also to the, the, uh, community of Tulare where I first met Milt, since I grew up in Tulare. And we've been blessed to have you, both communities. And then also I'd like to thank Luana for her time on the, the council and everything she's tried to get accomplished and everything.
Thank you.
Virginia Gorilla, address on record. Brock took part of what I was going to say. I was going to say you'd, you've done a very good job, uh, council member Tate, and it's been a pleasure having you on the council. But I also want to say before you all leave and things get switched around and the new council comes up, that I really appreciate the staff and all the work that they do and all the support that they give the council. You all know what it's like to start up on the council, not knowing what's going on, catching up to everything. And without this staff, this incredible staff, none of it would happen. And so I just really want to thank all of you, including Rich, who does a great job. Um, and yeah, he should come back to Porterville, but he's doing a great job in transportation. So I just wanted to give that last comment from our, um, staff all across the board to our city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so.
Hello. Hi, um, raise it up? Okay. Um, hi, my name is Yala Mar with Century 21 and I'm here today, um, in regards to the Development Block Grant Advisory and Housing Committee. Um, I've been a resident with Porterville for about 25 years, lived here my whole life. And, um, I just want to bring awareness to this community because it seems like it's a very important, um, committee to have for progression. And I feel like progression's very important in Porterville, especially now since we have a lot new, um, developments of single-family homes in a growing community, a rapid community here actually. Um, Porterville was actually top 10 and, um, I believe in California nationwide as growing population. So, um, on that committee, um, I just want to bring awareness, um, so per the Brown Act, um, these type of committees are supposed to be having regular meetings since they are, um, receiving state grants and advising where to use those grants. And per this committee, they only have meetings once a year, um, unlike all the other committees that they do have regular meetings per maybe once a month. So I guess my question is if this committee can have regular meetings, um, because it's very important. Um, they actually have regular meetings to discuss the progression of Porterville compared to once a year, um, because at that pace, we're not regularly, we're, we're not going to see no progression, to be honest with you. Um, and also looking at previous meetings, um, it seems like, um, I don't know if other members have, um, also expressed their concerns for, um, money being used in other funds. And, um, I just don't see any progression. So I guess, um, my advice to you is, um, if this committee can actually have regular meetings. So I think that is all. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, CDBG, that's, well, yeah, Mr., uh, Mr. Redenar was listening to the information that was presented, so. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward?
My name is Scott Bowler. My address is 1704 West Olive, apartment number 65, 165, sorry. We do appreciate the city council's consideration to move the Christmas parade to Thursday, December 8th, due to weather and the best interest of the children and the community. Thank you to all the city departments that are involved in the flexibility that have shown their help to bring this event to the community. Thank you to everyone who attended the, the last First Friday Coffee where we were able to hear the state of the city address from Mayor Flores. Thank you to the city for sponsoring this event. We had close to 100 attendees. We will be holding a membership orientation Thursday, December 8th at 2:00 PM. This is for new and current member, chamber members who are interested in learning more about the chamber benefits and how to best use them. We have welcomed two new members, Haven and the Palace Kitchen Craft and Bar. We would like to invite everyone to a ribbon cutting for the Palace Kitchen Craft and Bar on December 15th at 5:00 PM to celebrate their opening of their new business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else that would like to come forward?
So, good evening. Excuse me. Good evening again. My name is Marco Galena. I came here, uh, on the last, uh, council meeting and I addressed in regard to, uh, the, the award of the, um, Business of the Year. I spoke with you a little bit, uh, after, I forget your name, I'm sorry.
It's fine, Luana. It's Luana Tate.
Okay. So I wanted to address that because we had a good conversation. And in this, in this case, I still believe that that, uh, Business of the Year accolade should be rescinded. And the reason being is because I addressed this in 2019 to Jason Lollis. And at that time, Jason Lollis mentioned to me that I didn't have proof. Back last month, when we went to court, Commissioner or Judge Ide finally found us right in regard to what we were claiming that was happening during that year. My fiance was being cheated out of her wages from 2008 all the way to 2019. Okay? So unfortunately, you can only res- um, claim for these periods for, what is it, two years? And that's all she was able to claim for. But that same year that they were awarded this Business of the Year is when my fiance actually filed this claim. And I'd like to really put a focus on getting this accolade rescinded. If it's not through the council, I'll make a note to actually go business to business to get a petition to be able to get this award rescinded. Because I totally believe that a person should be fully, who are, who's fully, um, deserving of this award should get it. But in this case, people were cheated. My, my fiance was cheated for so many years. This business, this family believes that they're above everyone else and I totally disagree with that. And the reason why I will continue to come into these meetings, month in and month out, is to finally get this corrected. We have proof. I have everything documented. And again, if this is not going to be rescinded through the, through the council that actually did, we, awarded this, I will go through business to business to see if it's right, to see if it's fair. Because the year that this award was, again, awarded was when my fiance filed a claim and yet she's being told that it's too late because the award has been already set. Marion Jones, right? Um, who's the cyclist? Uh, Neil Armstrong or Armstrong? When they were, when they were caught using performance-enhancing drugs, all their awards were taken away from them. And I totally believe in this case, that that Business of the Year accolade should also be taken back. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so. Do we have anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on. The AB 1234 reports, numbers one through 14, I'm going to move them until the back of scheduled matter so that we can proceed with the council meeting. We'll now go on into the consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar. All items removed from the consent calendar for further discussion will be heard at the end of scheduled matters. How does council wish to proceed with regards to items number one through 10 of the consent calendar?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve items one through 10 in the consent calendar unless there's some abstentions or, not abstentions, but a...
Any conflicts? No noted, no noted conflicts? Okay. Uh, we have the motion made by council member Stowe. Council member Wyrock, I couldn't, I didn't hear you.
I seconded the motion.
Thank you very much. No further discussion. Um, call for the vote, please.
Council member Wyrock?
Aye.
Council member Tate?
Aye.
Council member Stowe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gorilla?
Aye.
Mayor Flores?
Aye. Passage unanimous, 5-0. We'll now go into the public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one public hearing that's been scheduled for this evening is to consider golf course, uh, golf course fee increases and Mr. Moore will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lollis, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. The Porterville Municipal Golf Course is a nine-hole course owned by the city. The golf course pro, Casey Butler, is contracted by the city to manage the course. Butler recently contacted staff to suggest analyzing some of the fees at the golf course, which have been in place for over 15 years. In that time span, the minimum wage has doubled and many other operational expenses have increased. The golf course has just received and is slated to receive a few significant capital improvements in the coming months. The golf course has just begun a golf cart lease program that is providing much higher quality carts, which has been a huge need of the course for some time now. Also, the parking lot has just been repaved and the driving range, netting and poles will be replaced. In addition, there are plans to address dry patches on a couple of the fairways. The recommendation by Butler is to increase the majority of the fees by $1, excluding all youth fees and the daily ticket surcharge fee. This increase is anticipated to be sufficient for several years to come. Here is a list of current and proposed fees. Nine holes, $12 to $13. Repeat mine, which is also the twilight, $7 to $8. Nine-hole cart, $11 to $12. An 18-hole cart, $20 to $21. The twilight cart, $9 to $10. Monthly ticket pass, $70 to $75. Family pass, $85 to $90. Senior pass, $60 to $65. And the youth pass and the daily ticket surcharge fees remain the same. The Porterville Municipal Golf Course is unique in that it does not increase fees for weekend play, nor does it charge a per-person rider fee for carts. To that regard, an example of fees from a few other municipal golf courses around the valley are as follows. Tulare Golf Course, nine holes, $24, weekends, $27. 18 holes, $34, weekends, $40. Nine-hole cart, $10 per rider and 18-hole cart, $18 per rider. Exeter Golf Course, nine holes, $14, weekends, $16 and the cart is $8 per rider. LA's Golf Course, nine holes, $22, 18 holes, $26 and the cart is $20. And the Riverside Golf Course out of Fresno, nine holes, $25, weekends, $27. 18 holes, $29 with weekends, $39. The cart for nine holes, $12 per rider and 18 holes, it is $17 per rider. At its meeting on November 3rd, 2022, the Parks and Leisure Services Commission voted unanimously to recommend the proposed fee increases presented by staff. Staff's recommendation that the city council conduct a public hearing to solicit comment on the proposed golf course fees and consider adoption of the draft resolution approving the new golf course fees. That concludes staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I will let you know, I received a text from our golf pro, Casey Butler, about five minutes ago, who was sideswiped in a car accident. He's doing okay, as is everyone, but, um, he was intending to be on here tonight. We're trying to get the assistant pro Alex to be on, just in case there's any questions. That concludes the report.
Thank you. Um, council, I'm going to go ahead. It is 7:07. I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to make comment? It is 7:08. We will close the public hearing. Oh, I apologize, I closed, but there was no, thank you for that. There was none virtually. I'm going to bring it back to council. How does council wish to proceed?
Well, being that, um, I know a little bit about it.
Just a little bit, huh?
I think it's, I think it's well overdue to, to increase these fees. I mean, we're been, it's been a long time coming and it, golf courses need to op, they need to operate in some kind of, um, I know we're not going to make all our money back, but, uh, we need to increase these fees and make a good majority of it back.
Well, I agree with the increase because it's been a long time since that has been, um, even done, since, to my knowledge. So are you making the recommendation?
Well, I would definitely make a recommendation, uh, in a motion to, uh, adopt a new fees.
And I will go ahead and second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, please.
Council member Wyrock?
Aye.
Council member Tate?
Aye.
Council member Stowe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gorilla?
Aye.
Mayor Flores?
Aye. Passage unanimous, 5-0. We'll now go into the scheduled matters.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three scheduled matters before the council this evening. The first is consideration of city code prohibiting commercial vehicles from using certain streets and Mr., um, Sanchez can provide the staff report.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Lollis, honorable mayor, members of council. At its meeting on November 15th, the city council directed staff to bring forward a draft resolution considering the prohibition of commercial vehicles from using specific streets or portions thereof, as concerns had been raised regarding the increased number of commercial vehicles utilizing certain residential streets. In this case, East Seats Avenue, Roach Street and East Worth Avenue to travel between South Main and South Plano Streets. Prohibiting commercial vehicles from using certain residential streets helps to protect the health, safety and welfare of residents of the city and it helps to minimize the war and terror on city streets. Staff has reviewed the city's municipal code and evaluated the areas in question and determined that in addition to those seats previously noted, it would also be prudent to prohibit commercial vehicles from using South Fourth Street between EC8s Avenue and East Gibbons Avenue. Pursuant to Article 13, Section 17-13... 8th Avenue and East Gibbons Avenue. Pursuant to Article 13, Section 17-13.3 of the city's municipal code, the council may adopt by resolution the prohibition of commercial vehicles from using specific streets or portions thereof, to which the city engineer shall ensure the posting of such prohibition. At this time, the recommendation is that the city council consider review the city's code requirements for prohibiting commercial vehicles from using certain streets, specifically East 8th Avenue, South Fourth Street, South Roach Street, and East Worth Avenue between South Second Street and South Plano Street. I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, for the report. Does counsel members, do they have, do you have any questions to this regard that was presented? Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Councilmember Wyrock, did you have any questions?
Yes, I, I want to clarify that this is for commercial vehicles being 18-wheelers and not all commercial vehicles. Correct?
Correct. That is correct. It's the 18-wheelers. It's just the big ones. It's not the...
Correct. We'll put a weight limit on those signs. Typically, it's either not exceed three or four tons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. The weight limit was a concern. It doesn't prohibit other vehicles from coming through, especially FedEx and UPS. I know that there was concern to that regard, so that's not going to prohibit them to be coming through because of tonnage. It has to do with the big, big rigs, the big trucks.
Correct.
The big commercial trucks. Okay. All right, we've gotten the information. It was brought at the last council meeting. We asked for the draft resolution. The additional street has been added prohibiting vehicles, which is South Fourth Street. Is that correct? That was the additional to the first request?
Correct. Because of the nature of the street being similar to the others.
Okay, because it is displayed on the map here that is presented, that was given to us with the package. Does counsel have any questions of Mr. Sanchez? How does counsel wish to proceed?
I'll make a motion that we approve the city code prohibiting commercial vehicles from using the certain streets outlined in the staff report.
And I will go ahead and second. We have a motion by Councilmember Wyrock and a second by me. Is there any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Wyrock?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Stowe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carrillo?
Aye.
Mayor Flores?
Aye. Passage unanimous, five zero. Okay, we will now move on to item number 13.
Thank you, Your Honor. Next scheduled matter in order is the consideration of Military Banner Program banner locations. And again, Mr. Moore will provide that staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless. I've asked Ms. Amy Gravell to present this tonight. She is extremely instrumental in this program.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, members of council. The city initiated the Military Banner Program in 2016. The program was created as a way to honor both current and former military personnel for their service to the nation and community. Family members of loved ones may nominate a military hero to be honored with a banner that shows the individual's name, photo, and branch of service. The public nomination period for the next installment is currently underway and lasts until February of 2023. The banners are prominently displayed throughout the year. To qualify for the Military Banner Program, the honoree must be a current or past member of the United States Armed Forces and a current or past resident within the Porterville Unified School District boundary area. Staff is honored to report the number of banners by year since the program's inception. In our first year, in 2016, we installed 36 banners. In 2017, there were 77. 2018, 128. 2019, 175. In 2020, we had our biggest year with 216 banners. In 2021, 122. And earlier this year, in 2022, we installed 113. In total, there are over 850 banners installed in the community. To that regard, additional banner locations need to be identified to accommodate future banners. Staff has provided the city council display availability on some heavily traveled streets within the city, from which those locations may be prioritized. Council may also determine its own locations. The Military Program Banner, Military Banner Program Committee, at its meeting on November 29, unanimously recommended to the council the following streets to be priority of those listed on the map. The number of poles from the recommended locations is estimated to be able to accommodate at least the next two years of honorees. On the map in front of those locations that were prioritized were those that are highlighted in a color versus those in the gray. The streets are Henderson Avenue, Morton Avenue, Jay Street, Newcombe Street, Prospect, Prospect Street, and Putnam Avenue. It's staff, staff's recommendation that the council provide direction on the location of new military banners as the program expands past its current designated locations. Myself and Director Moore are available for questions at the reunion.
Thank you. The numbers make me smile. They just grow, the additions from when it first started. I can remember. Okay, how does counsel wish to proceed with regard to the, to the direction and the location of the military banners? And looking at the map with the expansion options?
I'll make the motion that we accept the expansion of the Military Banner Program and its additional locations, as staff has outlined in the extension map, which is great, great privilege to be part of a city that honors veterans and, and people that have lived here and children who have served our great nation. So I'll make the motion that we approve the expanded locations of the Military Banner Program.
You have a motion by Councilmember Wyrock?
I will second.
And a second by Councilmember Stowe. No further discussion. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Wyrock?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Stowe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carrillo?
Aye.
Mayor Flores?
Aye. Passage unanimous, five zero. We'll now go into item number 14.
Thank you, Your Honor. Final scheduled matter for this evening is consider the bid results for the Tulley River Parkway Phase 3 project. Mr. Sanchez will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, Honorable Mayor, members of council. On October, excuse me, on October 20th this year, staff received four bids for the Tulley River Parkway Phase 3 project. The project consists of the construction of a Class 1 bicycle and pedestrian trail between Main and Plano Streets. This phase of a multi-phase trail system will extend one and a quarter miles of existing trail to the east, thereby continuing the development of a system of linkages that will provide for alternate modes and routes of travel. This trail will include solar lighting, fixtures, bridges, retaining walls, trail signage, and markings, among other related items. With the project being funded by a Federal Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Grant, or CMAC, a required component of that grant is the utilization of disadvantaged business enterprises, or in short, DVEs. With these type of projects under the FHWA's umbrella, a project's goal is set specific to that project, and the bidding contractor must demonstrate that they either met that goal or demonstrated what they term good faith efforts, that they made significant enough effort, but even then weren't able to come up with the DVE goal that was required. And because of the dollar amount of this project, we had to work with Caltrans along the way, one, to get the DVE goal approved before we bid, and then, secondly, submit the DVE findings package to them for their concurrence. So that, that all takes time, especially in the case here that the DVE goal from the apparent low in the second was not met. It was only until the third bidder that the goal was met for DVE, but that didn't automatically disqualify the low bid at that point. So we requested the good faith effort package. They have three, four days to submit that. Once we received it and went through it, it just didn't, the staff didn't feel it was really, well, not feel, didn't find that it was strong enough in, for the good faith efforts. We spoke with Caltrans, and even though it's their programs, because they're the liaisons for the FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, they ultimately leave it to every local agency to say whether or not it's a compliant bid, which all seems okay, except that whenever the, the project is complete and then the auditors follow up afterwards, DVE headquarters will really be looking at it with a fine-tooth comb. And if it's found that we didn't follow the rules, you know, very, if we didn't strictly adhere to them, they could potentially pull back all the monies. So in this case, it's over $2 million, and obviously, we don't want to risk that. So we, we informed the low bidder that their good faith effort wasn't sufficient. They did have an opportunity to re-submit a reconsideration. We, we formed a small committee of staff members to review their proposal. Ultimately, they determined that it, the same opinion originally, which was that it was not a sufficient good faith effort. And then additionally, with the, the second bidder and also not meeting DVE requirements and falling finally to the third, we feel that it, the most prudent thing would be to rebid this project since it's significantly over the engineers, 10% over the engineers' estimate, and encourage and reach out to several DVE firms to be able to, to meet the goal without having to go through a good faith effort process. Because once it goes to that, it gets heavily scrutinized. And so with that, you know, here you can see the results of the bids. And so with all that said, the recommendation of council is that they reject all bids and authorize staff to re-advertise the project.
Thank you. I'm going to bring it to council. How does counsel wish to proceed? Do you have any questions of Javier or any direction?
Madam Mayor, I have a quick question.
Please, go ahead, Councilmember Wyrock.
I'm curious about the engineers' estimate, if there's one or two items in the actual submitted bids that were significantly over the engineers' estimate, or whether, you know, numerous categories where the costs have inflated. And then, secondly, as part of that question is, will we have to revise our engineers' estimate up because stuff has even gotten more expensive since this went to bid the first time?
There wasn't any one specific item or even a few specific items that were significantly over. Just in general, the entire bid was, was over. It's not required to revise the engineers' estimate. It had been updated to, you know, at an attempt to capture the current market. And ultimately, if we do find a, or receive another bid meeting the DVE goal, we can, or it'd be up to council to consider whether the award at that time.
Thank you, Director Sanchez.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Well, my comment is I feel it's important to comply with the funding agency and guidelines. So I agree with the, I want to make a motion.
Please do, if that's what you wish.
I'd like to make a motion to reject the bids and authorize staff to re-advertise for bids on this project.
We have a motion to reject the bids.
I will second that.
And a second by Councilmember Stowe. No further discussion. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Wyrock?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Stowe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carrillo?
Aye.
Mayor Flores?
Aye. Passage unanimous, five zero. Thank you. We will now go back to the AB 1234 reports. This is the time for all AB 1234 reports required pursuant to Government Code 53 to 32.3. The first one is the Social Services Transportation Advisory Council. Vice Mayor?
Yes. This is the update for the November 8 meeting. Making sure I have my correct notes. So this was the Social Services Transportation Advisory Council, STACK. We met, I attended this one virtually, and the set agenda actually has the approval of the minutes, and then some discussion around the previous month's ride days reports. And then there was a discussion on the transport expansion, which is the micro-transit transportation. We discussed the Gen Fair implementation update and that there was some issues with that not being fully functional. We reviewed some previous month's updates and just finding that some of those were not compatible, so looking into improving that. There was one other item I wanted to share, and that was the discussion points on transportation planning and coordination. We reviewed the coordinated plan update, received updates on the Cross Valley Corridor Operations Plan, and then just received information on the TCRTA branding and outreach. And then the last was we just received transit provider updates. So this comes from first Visalia Transit and then TCRTA, which is the remainder of the county. Our next meeting will be February 14, and that concludes my report for staff committee.
Thank you. The next one is the Transportation Forum. Vice Mayor, that one's yours. Yes.
So the next one was the Transit Forum. That was on Wednesday, November 9. I attended this Zoom as well. The first part of the agenda, we discussed different funding grants and programs. The first piece of that is the state funding. So we talked about strategic partnerships and that starting this winter, sustainable communities openings in winter as well, and then discussed some potential FTA federal funding for the fiscal year 2022. That is called Thriving Communities Program, and it's a technical assistance in planning. And then we did information sharing with, from that previous committee, the STACK, and we received quarterly ridership reports and general updates, and then just reviewed some of the planning documents, which includes the Tulare County Coordinated Transportation Plan updates and the Cross Valley Corridor Phase Operations Plan, RFP. And that concludes my report for the Transit Forum.
Thank you. We'll now go on to the Police Department badge pinning ceremony of November the 16. I attended the ceremony to witness the badge pinning and the promotion of Carlos Ochoa from corporal to sergeant. It was wonderful to be there and to see the support he received on that day from his family and the department. I want to say congratulations to Carlos, especially when they said he was a Manatchee graduate.
You were, Councilmember Stowe, you were there.
Yes, I was.
Would you like to add to that?
I too want to congratulate Carlos. I've known him since he was a little, a little boy, and I watched him grow up, and for him to become a sergeant in our police department, I was so proud of him. And I'm still very proud, and always been very proud of our police department and fire department, and our entire staff, as far as that go. But it was great. It's great to see Carlos come up on board and see, you know, our hometown kids come back and work in our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyrock, you were there. Would you like to add to that or make comment?
Just briefly, I also want to recognize Ochoa for accepting the position and our leadership team in the police department for developing candidates in-house. Very proud of the work that they do safely, we have with the community, and I think the promotion is well deserved, well earned.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the Mighty One Nighty Committee Report. Councilmember Tate?
I do believe this was the first time that we were, that we met in person. Can you hear me?
Can now.
Okay, thank you. And it was amazing to see all of the different levels of departments and businesses from neighboring communities, Springville Camp Nelson, and to see, or to be part of all the different agencies that are working together to, to make this happen. This, this has been a long-term goal, and we're seeing a lot of progress there as far as Caltrans working with the city and the county. And the signage, that we're working on that, we're, all of this is to help promote tourism, draw people here to our area. And as I was coming back from my vacation a couple of days ago, it had been raining here, and there was a rainbow peeking out behind the clouds, and I could see the sun beaming down on our mountains. And we really do live in a beautiful location. So, you know, it was, it was interesting to be able to see this whole group of people working together towards the same goals. working together towards the same goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to the Tulare County Homeless Task Force of November the 16th. This was a virtual meeting Claudia Calderon and I attended. There were no public comments. The first order of business was to adopt the resolution to allow the Task Force on Homelessness to continue to hold meetings remotely. Minutes of October the 19th, 2022 were approved. The motion was made to cancel the December 21st meeting and reconvene on January the 18th, 2023, in person at a location provided by Visalia Unified School District. Noah Whitaker provided updates on project room key, home key, homeless housing, the assistance and prevention. Discussion on the use of County ARPA funds and mobile shower units was brought to the table. Presentation on Team Challenge by Matthew Mulcher. The updates forgiven by the cities from Porterville. Claudia Calderon provided the information. At the Porterville Welcome Center, unduplicated, unduplicated number as of November the 16th are 2,318 individuals. They are currently serving up to 75, 80 people per day. That would be meals and other services. Link events continue to take place every other Wednesday. Year-to-date housed in permanent housing is 10. The Link Committee continues to meet and support efforts. They had a successful coat giveaway on November the 2nd during a Link event, serving 126 individuals. Now, they are preparing for the point-in-time service that will take place in January. The survey. With regard to Finca Serena, it is currently working on leasing out the first 40 units and working with the different partners to match the voucher type that correlate with the funding sources received for this project. Officer Silva continues his outreach efforts in Porterville. With regard to Bridges to Employment and Careers, that program quarter, one meeting took place this morning on that day that we reported. Okay, the date that we reported on November the 16th. There were 28 referrals that had been received by the Employment Connection from various partners. Of those referrals, 18 have been enrolled in career services. Seven in the Employment Careers Project. All seven have been placed in the City of Porterville Public Works, Parks and Library Departments. Four more are currently active referrals waiting to be placed with the City of Porterville for work experience. And that concludes the report. The next meeting is January the 18th, 2023. The, this meeting can be found on the Tulare County Homeless Task Force on their website under the Health and Human Services. The Council of Cities Meeting of November the 16th was canceled. We'll now move into the Library Facility Planning Committee. Vice Mayor?
Sorry, I'm trying to open these notes here. Okay. The Library Facility Planning Committee met on November 17th at 4:15 PM. The minutes were approved from the previous meeting, which was in August 18th. The two scheduled matters were the new library update and then a library services update. The city completed the property acquisition of the parcel across the street from South Valley Justice Center. The city now owns all of the land at the future site of the new library. A request for qualifications, RFQ, for a design-build project is designed to be on an upcoming city council agenda. Within the RFQ is a statement of qualifications, which is an opportunity for design-build entities to demonstrate their capability to design and construct the project. An approximate timeline should have the RFQ process wrapping up by the end of January 2023. An item would then go to council in February 2023 to authorize negotiating a contract with the leading firm from the RFQ process. The selected firm would then begin the design phase in March 2023. If all goes smooth, that's the timeline we're looking at. Committee member Cervantes provided a library services update. She shared about several events that took place in September and October. Pictures with Santa will be back in December, and I believe that just occurred, with a session dedicated for those with special needs. Staff is also planning, in the planning stages of winter break activities, including movies and crafts. Information was shared on two libraries featured in American Library's annual design showcase publication. Lastly, similar to other area libraries, a security guard was hired in September to be present at the temporary library for added safety for the patrons. The security guard currently works weekdays, 4:15 to 8:15. That meeting adjourned at 4:35. Our next meeting is scheduled for February 16th, 2023. That concludes the library report.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Porterville Chamber of Commerce Annual Installation and Award Show. Jason Reidner, Alita Verduzco, and I attended the ceremony. You could feel the excitement upon the arrival, the appetizer networking area, reacquainting with friends. I want to say, Adonis, nice job in the setup. It was done very well, each area. And I wanted you to know that because I did that night and I wanted to say thank you once again. It was a nice acknowledgement also to all of the nominees in all the categories. I wanted to say once again, congratulations to Kent Hopper for the Man of the Year, Karen Vanny, Woman of the Year, Ben Watson, Male Youth of the Year from Harmony Magnet, Mariana Ramos Silva, Female Youth of the Year from Porterville High School, Eagle Mountain Casino, Large Business of the Year, Stafford's Chocolate, Small Business of the Year, the Tulare River Parkway Project, Kathy Capone for the Community Service Project of the Year. It was definitely well attended and a night to remember. Thank you for that. The TCAC Tulare County Transportation Authority Board Meeting for November the 21st was canceled. We are meeting on Monday for that meeting. The Community Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony on November the 25th. This event is always a magical moment. It is an event which is a collaboration of many organizations that come together right after Thanksgiving. There were bell ringers. Pastor Blalock did a wonderful job in the welcome and the introductions. Community songs were sung, like, "Oh, come you, all you faithful, and joy to the world." I don't know how to sing, but I tell you, I found some friends that knew how. And I stood right by them and I asked them if I could join them. They didn't tell me no, but they, I mean, they may not let me do that next year. I, no, I sang the songs, Councilmember. I sang the songs right along with them. And like I said, they may not want me standing next to them next year. But I, I was there. It was nice to belt out the warmth of Christmas joy and cheer. The school choir sang the Chipmunk Christmas Song. And while Silent Night was being sung, we looked toward the tree at City Hall and the trees went on as if it was a magic moment. That was, that was cool. I liked that. Okay. The Military Banner Committee.
Yes.
And I'm just looking at you, but, because that one's yours.
Yes. The Military Banner Committee met on November 29th at 11:00 AM. We met here in the City Hall Chambers. Minutes were approved from the previous meeting from August 23rd, 2022. The first scheduled matter was on the 2023 application period. That period is now open and runs through February 1st, 2023. The cost of a new banner is $245. Applicants may apply in person at the Parks and Leisure Office or on the city's website. Banners will go up just prior to Memorial Day. Next, the 2018 renewal process was discussed. All of the banner sponsors from 2018 will be contacted by staff in the coming weeks. They have until February 1st to decide whether they would like to renew their banner. The old banner will come down in May and the sponsor will be able to pick it up at that time. The cost for renewal is $145. The first scheduled matter was the banner map. The committee thoroughly reviewed the map of potential locations for new banners as provided by staff. There were 13 streets on that map. The committee voted unanimously to recommend the following streets to be the next banner pole locations. Henderson, Morton, Jay, Newcombe, Prospect, and Putnam. That meeting adjourned at 11:57 AM. And that concludes the military banner.
Thank you. The next one is the Internal City Audit Committee. We met on November the 30th in person. We're all, all members, well, with one attending virtually, which was Vice Mayor. So, we went on into the scheduled matters. The minute, minutes of October the 20, of October 26th were unanimously approved. The review of the Barn Theater Agreement. The committee received the document they were waiting for in the search of deed dating back to the year 1909 with specific languages to the terms of use. Legal counsel Ellen Bailey participated in the discussion on behalf of the Barn Theater. The revisions that had been prepared and reviewed by both the Barn Theater and counsel for the Internal Audit Committee will be brought to the full council on December the 20th. The review of the Kiwanis Club Agreement between the City of Porterville for the use of the property located at 450 North Newcombe. This agreement expired in 2005. It appears they still do exist and are using the building. We inquired if there was a current board, who that contact person is. There is still activity. Bert Martinez is the involvement member. Tracy Martinez participated on behalf of Kiwanis. The new agreement should be in place, discussion for future use, if any, future development of the area, parking, et cetera. The agreement will be brought back to the Internal Audit Committee for further discussion. Property inspection, fire, and building was requested. A full agreement with updated information, certificates of insurance will be looked into. Mr. Moore and his staff will work directly with Kiwanis. This item will be brought back to the committee on January the 25th, the Internal Audit Committee. The review of Comision Honorifica Mexicana Americana Agreement. The license between the city and comision for use of the real property located at 466 West Putnam. This agreement does not expire until 2027, though there was discussion brought with regard to the addendum that was dated March 17th, 2020, regarding cargo container that had not been signed by comision. This was during COVID and it was difficult to obtain the signature. Boarding on the addendum stated that the container must be removed no later than five years after placement on the property, which brings the date of March 17th, 2022. That would be looked into. The original agreement is still in effect through 2027. The question was brought forth by committee member Bemis with regard to tax information. Again, with all the discussions that were had at that meeting, this agreement will be brought back on the 25th of January to the Audit Committee. For our next meeting, it will be Kiwanis, Comision Honorifica, Elks Lodge, quick claim deed. Our meeting did adjourn. We will not have a meeting in December. The meeting has been scheduled for January the 25th. Vice Mayor, is there something you would like to add to that? Pretty much the discussion that we had. We'll go into the Eastern Tulie Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Councilmember Wyrock?
The Eastern Tulie Groundwater Sustainability Agency met on December the 1st. I attended remotely and Director Knight attended in person. On the consent calendar were three items. The board minutes from the November 3rd of 2022 minutes. The public teleconference was voted to continue on forward. And we reviewed the financial statements, all with a unanimous vote. There were five items under administration. The first was a consideration to file and record certificates of liens with the county for unpaid groundwater extraction fees. Notices of the fees that were due were mailed out to different property owners. The notices, we received most of the fees paid. However, there's an outstanding balance of about, I think it was $87,000 from various landowners who had not paid their fees. There were no requests by anybody who was invoiced for those fees for any type of payment options. So, there was an action to approve, to file the certificate of lien with the county. So, the board will direct, the board did direct staff to take that next step. The second item under administration was the approval of the ETGSA Well Mitigation Program Policy. It was required to be completed by December 31st of this year. And a subcommittee has been working with the board over a period of time to develop this policy. Aspects of a technical memorandum from September 22nd, 2022, from Thomas Harder and Company, were woven into and throughout the ETGSA Well Mitigation Program Policy that again was due by December 31st. We reviewed the mitigation program and opened it up to public comment. And after some discussion amongst the board and with input from the public comment, the Eastern Tulie GSA Well Mitigation Program is approved. There are subcommittees that will continue to meet as needed to refine the process and procedures. Mr. Knight, do you have anything to add to that item for the Well Mitigation Program Policy?
No, I don't. You covered it great.
Okay. Thank you. The third item was for the board to consider approval of the eighth amended rules and regulations. The staff was presented the revisions. And the document was approved unanimously to revise the rules and regulations. There are some boilerplate template language that was put into some sections over land subsidence. Different categories, one and a half to two feet, a little bit over two feet to two and a half feet, and 2.5 to 2.99 feet. Depending on the amount of subsidence, it triggers next types of actions. The fourth thing under administration was a logo redesign. There's a little bit of discussion related to it, just like the, the good discussion related to the Tulare County Regional Transit Authority redoing their design. We look forward to seeing some movement on that in the next couple of months. And then the fifth item, the final item, under administration was a accounting and invoicing review and approval from Ford Creeks. There was a lot of stakeholder outreach that occurred and some community engagement. There were a couple of Zoom teleconferences that were sponsored by the ETGSA. The Board of Directors also had a November 3rd meeting and a Joint Executive and Stakeholder Committee meeting on November the 10th. They also attended the Porterville Ambassador Luncheon. And they presented some information to the chamber ambassadors and members on information about the agency. With that, Michael, Director Knight, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, I think you covered everything. No additional items. Just the upcoming stakeholder meeting that was scheduled for this Thursday has been canceled.
Thank you. Thank you. I hadn't heard that. Madam Mayor, that's the end of that report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's nice to have you in the audience, Frohalio. Okay. We'll now move on to the Porterville Chamber First Friday Coffee. I'm gonna look at Councilmember Stowe on that one first, and then I'll chime in.
Thank you, Your Honor. I did have the privilege of making this one. And because of the state of, state of the city address that you gave was outstanding. We had a very good crowd, as the gentleman mentioned earlier. And it was one of the best I've been to. Our city is definitely on the move and growing. And within the next five years, you probably see a lot of good stuff happening in Porterville. There's a lot of good things going on, and you didn't get to mention most of them because of the
The timeframe.
The timeframe and security of the projects. But I, I am very proud to be a Portavillian. And in the next five years, I think this city will just take off and grow as it should have been. And if it wasn't for COVID, I think we would have been there already. But now we're starting again, and hopefully nothing will hold us back this time. And you did a very nice job of stating that. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. It didn't get you out of not being here today. I want to say thank you to everyone that was involved in the preparation and the acoustics of of making the state of the city so successful. It was a lot of work. I want to acknowledge that both councilmember elects were in the audience and I want to thank you for that because it's important that you hear the projects that are going on and that it'll bring you current to where it has been done over the year. And I want to thank you for your participation in being there. It's always an honor and it's always a privilege to be able to share with the community with everything that we've done. But I'm going to look directly at staff when I say this. And those of you that are on virtually, would you please come on? I know that Maria won't, but those of you that are on, please come on. I know. Each of the departments should be proud of yourselves. You should know that, that during the year there are a lot of stresses, there are a lot of challenges that come to the table, but you've always been to the forefront and you've always stood by everything that you do. So I want to thank you for that because as I was up there, I get emotional, I get very passionate in a delivery because I know that during the year, you're working very hard and it does not go unnoticed. And you need to know that, that you are appreciated. And Councilmember Stowe, you know, like I said, I got emotional, but I got, I got emotional while I was up there. I was trying to maintain and contain it. I was trying to figure out where I was gonna hold that microphone, whether I was gonna keep it here and I was gonna keep it here. But I have to tell you that. And Councilmember Tate, just know that all the work that you have done, the both of you, no, you and I have hung out at events and we've done things and we presented at a global leadership conference. We were both there and over the years, how, sitting next to you. So the state of the city and all the work, detaching all of this other stuff, I commend you. I commend the city staff and everybody that got us to where we are this evening. I mean, for the state of the city. That's all I have to say. That just gets me emotional. Okay, let's go on. Now we'll go into oral communications once again. Is there anybody that would like to come forth under oral communications?
Brock Neely address on record. I'd just like to know kind of what the status of the hotel is that is planned there behind Burger King? Because once the casino gets open, it'd sure be nice to keep those people in town to spend money. Then also on the library, is any of the internet kids' ideas gonna be incorporated into the new library? Or did we just throw a bunch of money away? Just wondering.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward under oral communications? Do we have anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Where's Councilmember Wyrock? What happened to the screen? Okay, I was looking for you guys. All of a sudden, I couldn't see anybody up here. All right. Fernando? You were testing me, huh? I was saying, where did everybody go? And no one else under oral communications virtually? Thank you. We'll now go on to other matters. Councilmember Tate?
Well, I didn't prepare any speeches for this evening because I just, in retrospect, thinking back on everything that we've accomplished this last year. Sorry I wasn't able to be at the Chamber last, you know, First Friday Coffee. And I did read the article in the newspaper. So you covered a lot of territory. We covered a lot of territory in this last year. And, you know, our city staff are just amazing. And thank you so much for all the patience that you've had with me. And it's been a learning experience and I really don't think that experience can ever be taken from you. So it's been a real privilege to work with you all and to know you. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm still here. And I guess I'll have a new district representative that I'll be able to talk to about problems that I would still like to see resolved in the community where I live. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Wyrock?
Thank you. I'd like to kind of piggyback on comments that we've heard online related to the staff and the professional work that they do to steer our community forward through very complex environments. You know, we can't please everybody all the time, but I think with the help of the staff, we're pleasing a lot of people most of the time. And they're putting in such long hours. It's just really appreciated seeing them online tonight. Also, public safety. I see these text messages come out about the high quality of work that they do to keep us safe and to keep negative elements out of our community. Just a shout out to them. And then the response when something goes wrong, to have the situation stabilize as quickly and as professionally as possible while limiting additional losses, be it a fire or an event where police are required. I'd like to thank Councilmember Tate and Honorable Councilmember Stowe. I guess that word will be said a few more times. Honorable Councilmember Stowe. I've heard a lot about you over the years. I've appreciated your, seeing your wisdom in person over these past few months as a council member and look forward to hearing more from you over the years as you continue to stick around. I'm sure that you will. It was great to hear the report out on the homeless task force and all that they have been accomplishing. None of us like to see people struggling and, but for the grace of God, there goes most of us, right? Many people are a few bad decisions away from a lifestyle that can really impact them, actually for their entire life. So with that, I'd like to kind of give a shout out to all of the public and private school teachers and administrators that do so much to influence the lives of the next generation of people coming up in Porterville, to help them understand what it's gonna take to be a grown-up and to contribute to society in a successful way. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for the council meeting tonight. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing if I may.
Okay.
On September twentieth, on September twentieth, during oral communications, Mr. Randy Hawthorne came forward and he brought his thought that there was a need for some pedestrian and vehicle safety improvements for the intersection of Newcombe Street and Mulberry Avenue. And I want to thank Mr. Hawthorne for bringing in his concern to the council. I want to also thank city staff and their focus for finding a solution to this traffic and pedestrian issue with some improvements. On December first, our deputy city clerk, Mr. Gabriel Moraga, provided me an update that in November of two thousand and twenty-one, a signal warrant analysis was issued and in many of this year, the analysis was complete and a report was published showing four of the nine warrants met the criteria for a signal and pedestrian crosswalks at that intersection right near Minatchee High School. There's budgeting underway, engineering progressing, and it's just a testament that, again, our city staff is aware of these situations, the community's aware of it. Together, we all work together to bring a safer solution for everybody. So I want to thank again Mr. Hawthorne for coming forward and all the residents of Porterville who come to the microphone or they pick up the phone and call us and let us know of a concern that they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stowe?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know I'm not good at saying goodbyes, but I'd like to say a few words if I may. And I want to thank, first of all, my wife. For eight years, I sat on this council and numerous council and committee meetings I attended. She sacrificed quite a bit. Plus, along with my illness, she really sacrificed a lot. And, you know, that compounded the problem. But she was always there and always supportive of me. And even during that time, even though she didn't want me to attend the meetings, I attended them anyway. I was still sick and she was upset because she thought she may have to start taking care of me again and become ill. But it worked out and she was always there and I do appreciate her very much throughout my, the stenonym's council. And she's always been there. I'm sure she's always, will be there. And I want to publicly thank her. And I joined council after a great deal of coaxing by some folks in town. But when I decided to run and I, and probably the deciding factor was when I ran, when I was working in Tulare, I was sitting at Chili's eating lunch and in back of me was two businessmen trying to figure out which cities they're gonna put their business. And they were talking and they mentioned Porterville. So I start tuning in and they says, well, I don't know about Porterville. You know, it's a dirty little town. And I'm thinking, wait a minute, that's my city. You know, so I thought, I didn't say anything to them, but I'm thinking that. So when I was offered, come back to Porterville, I did so graciously and I want to thank John for bringing me back. I really appreciate it because this was home. But when I ran for council, that was one of the things that I wanted to do, was try to help clean up Porterville, bring in more code enforcement and, you know, and make our city presentable to others coming in, the parks and whatever else that we may have. And, you know, we're still working on that and we're gonna accomplish that. And I appreciate Donnie and his staff for, you know, trying to do this and make things, you know, more pleasant for our children and staff. And I really think staff. I see most of you come up in your, as infants in your position. In fact, I probably seen a lot of you come up as infants in your life, now that I think about it. But, you know, including John. I remember when I first left Tulare and John was in there, I tried to entice him to run for city manager and he says, well, I don't have enough experience. And I thought, everybody starts somewhere. And I remember council, a couple of councilmen calling me when I was in Tulare that says, well, we can't find a city manager. I go, what are you looking for one for? He got the best one right there. He goes, who? I go, John. And so next week, I got a call. Hey, we hired John as our city manager. I thought, well, okay, which was great. And that was the best move they made. Now, I want to tell you folks, that man has done more for the city of Porterville than you can ever imagine. You know, he doesn't need Porterville. Porterville needs him. You know, he and his staff have done so much. And I appreciate each and every one of you because you are my family. And I appreciate your expertise and your knowledge because we've never been where we are now if it wasn't for you, each and every one of you. And I do appreciate that very much, what you've done and how you've done it and with integrity. And you never wavered from what we should have done in the right and the lawful way. And Julia, that goes for a lot of credit to you because you've always steered us in the right direction to keep us out of trouble, try to keep us out of lawsuits and whatever else there may be. And I do appreciate that. You're like one of the staff members, you know, because you're always here for us. We could call you and you'll get back with an answer. And I worked for five different cities in department, as a department head, and not one of them can match what you've guys done and what you do here. You do so much and you know so much compared to other staff. And I know, I'm not saying this just to, you know, to feed your ego. This is an honest-to-God truth, honest, that I have never worked with people such as you because you can come back with the right answers and do the, and study and do the research and you never failed us, never failed us. And I appreciate that. Current council, you're a great asset to our community. Just outstanding. You guys, you work hard at your job, you do your homework, you ask questions, and I do appreciate that. And Don, you're, you know, you're a great pick to be on this council. You know, you fit right in, you ask the right questions and I think we all do the right thing, you know. I never had an agenda when I came here. I don't have a business. I have a community and that's the way I felt. This is where I wanted to be. This is where I'm gonna die. I'm gonna be in Porterville the rest of my life. And I do, and to the councilmember elects, thank congratulations. And I am so proud to see young people step in and step up. And I hope you just carry the torch and keep things going because this is a great community. I want you to know, it's not the mayors that make the community. It's the prayers and each one of us. We pray. Good Lord, take care of us. It's gonna be, we're in good shape, people. We're in good shape. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you for those words. They're beautiful. I have a couple of things I wanted to just share really briefly. I was notified by a staff member, a director of the Tulley River Indian Health Center who oversees the Behavioral Health and Wellness Department. On the reservation, they do services throughout the area and they had a recent visit and tour of the navigation center and they were just amazed. So I just wanted to pass on. They highly complimented the facility, but also the services and the way they were outlined and the way that they serve our community that is in need right now. So I just wanted to share that back. Another thing I wanted to share really briefly is the mayor shared an email request with me because she was unable to, of all the numerous events that she attends, she didn't have it in her schedule to attend one of the recent meetings at Olive Streets Elementary School. And so after, it was after work, so I was able to attend. What they were doing is discussing their comprehensive school safety plan. And so I was really glad that I got to attend. It was parents and teachers, some staff, and they're reviewing their safety plan, which was kind of difficult to hear, you know, what they're planning for. And they do drills and things like that. But the thing I really liked about it was that as they facilitated the meeting, actually, the parents and the teachers were the ones that facilitated the meeting to make the motions and second and approve them. So I really loved that idea that the parents were that involved. Just a couple other notes. I took two pages of notes, but one of the really cool things that they also talked about was in the surrounding area of the school, they mentioned that, you know, things they would like to see get better. Their parking lot, their school expand and they're gonna talk to the school district about things like that. But also talked about the area on Orange Street and some of those small streets right there where their students are coming to school, walking to and from school. You know, that they really wished someday for a lighted crosswalk. And I just encouraged them to, you know, contact our staff and reach out and let them know. But that, to also look at our plans that we post every year of planning for these types of things. One thing they did mention is that they do feel supported by the Porterville Police Department, that they do see patrols out there in the mornings and afternoons and that they drive by throughout the day. So they feel supported and they wanted to express that. So I just wanted to share that and that I was, you know, grateful to attend that. Now, a few things I want to do is some acknowledgements and I won't take too much of time, but I want to thank Rich Tree for coming in to provide that presentation. I think that some of the things that we hear in all these transit and transportation committees and board meetings is all the work being done and a lot of it always reflects back to Porterville. And a lot of it always reflects back to Porterville and, you know, like the, the discussion on how long this has been in process. And I think that there's so much work that's being done with Rich and the T C R T A and the transportation and in the city of Porterville on partnerships and just funding and recruiting the team and then reporting. And so I felt like that was a good choice, Councilmember Wyrock, to suggest that Rich Tree come and provide that presentation. I think those, those big buses in the city driving around, they're, they look really nice and just look forward to the micro transit really expanding out. I also wanted to thank Virginia Gorilla for facilitating the Porterville leadership and really expanding the sessions that the participants are doing. And also thank you participants for coming here and introducing yourself again to the city council. I want to thank Parks and Leisure for all their work that they do, but specifically on this banner, military banner expansion. And I think some of the things that we don't see are all the time that it takes to, to drive the, the streets and even make suggestions for us to, to look at. And they have the street, then Amy creates a map and they have their color coded and then she says how many potential polls there would be and then we have to anticipate growth, you know, and then how long that would last if we need it. And then the committee gets to view that. And then the committee gets to discuss it. And then the committee makes the, you know, those recommendations and then it finally comes to council. So there's so much work that we all do together, but that really starts with the staff. And that's just one example of all the different ways that the staff support us to make informed decisions. And then that's up to us to make the right decision, but also do the reading, the research, spend the time in these committees. So I just want to thank you both for providing all that for us. Another acknowledgement I wanted to do is to the mayor. And the reason is, you know, this past year, coming out of COVID and now the, the public events are really ramping up, in addition to these committees, which is a lot of time and effort and prep and having the agendas and having the packets and traveling to or getting on the Zoom. And I work full time, so trying to find time to go to a private place to either take on that Zoom or drive to the meetings is a lot. But I really need to acknowledge the mayor because with all these events, there's very few events and committees and meetings that she is not at. And, you know, she's very gracious in, in the way that she, she treats people and interacts with everybody and she's always ready to just go in there and talk to everybody there. You know, whether she's on the reservation for an event or in the city or in the county. So I just wanted to acknowledge you and thank you because I really admire you being our mayor for the city of Porterville. And I admire you spending so much time and really taking your position as mayor serious and being a good example as a representative. So, and, and that includes all the correspondence you respond to and forward and send and, and all of that. So I, I just want to thank you for that. The last ones, I, I think I want to acknowledge last but not least is Councilmember Tate. Thank you for your time. Thank you for even being willing to come in. It's been a unique couple of years that I've been on here because we didn't just come in and stay with the same council. We've had a couple of changes. So that, me being new, having COVID and then having that change has, you know, just been learning. I'm just learning and, and going with it. But, you know, having you come on and your demeanor, I think your positive attitude and then your willingness to go and talk directly to people, whether that be door to door or to our staff. I, I just want to thank you for that and for really just jumping in, in your short period of time. You really took advantage of, of trying to be involved. Thank you. And I look forward to seeing you at different events and still seeing you involved. And Councilmember Stowe, I, I think, I'm, I'm not going to add too much to say, I think what you shared was beautiful and your acknowledgement of your family because without your family, which is something I, I also deal with, is you, you can't do anything without the family. But our community loves you, whether we know you from sports or your time and, you know, as a public servant and then just a human being, a good human being, that my family recognizes that as well. So we will definitely miss you and your, your discussions and, and sharing history on things. I, I will miss that myself, but I, you deserve the time with your family. So I guess with that, I, I just, the last thing I guess I'll say is the staff. And, you know, it brings it back when, when Milt talked about it and then some of our other council members, but when, I'll, I'll use this one example. When I was campaigning and running, I tried to learn as much as I could about the current issues and what's going on. I started with the budget and the projects and the goals and the things that the city already had planned. So I don't, I can't say I'm going to come in here and do this or that because I didn't know what was already in place, what was already working. There had been council members before me and staff that was already here for years that had established things. So I needed to see first what was working and, and how to support that. So when I came in, you know, after I came in, I thought back, wow, what if I would have came in and the staff wasn't as great or was, you know, a little shaky or, or things or some were leaving or, you know, retiring or moving to other jobs because we'd hear about, you know, job offers all the time. But it wasn't that way. I felt so fortunate to be able to come in and just have like amazing staff. I think the best part is that they're so knowledgeable and just come with us with so much information and were able to get educated pretty quickly on different topics. You know, and you think there's not an interest in something like when I, I came in, I didn't really know that I would be as interested in transit or transportation. That's just, you know, the buses and, and things like that, but I don't know that much about it. Well, then it, it changes to, well, it's actually everything. It's the streets, it's the roads. It's, it's everything and how are all these things fit together. And, and then I'll just give one other example and then I'm ending here. But as an Indian person, when I ran, I'm very familiar with tribal government. That's, I've worked in tribal government for years. I've worked in my community and served in my community in numerous capacities. And to an Indian person, I thought, you know, how, how is all these things going to be related to me even though this is my hometown? And it's all related. It's all related and I share this with the tribal council and tribal community. Water is important to us, having safe communities, taking care of the kids, taking care of the elders, having recreation and being prosperous is all important to us. So it's the same thing, the veterans, they're extremely important to us. So I feel like I fit right in and the topics are important to the city and they're important to me as well. So I just learn that more and more all the time, the more I interact with the staff and the more I'm involved in the community and the committees. So I just wanted to share that back as my thanks to the staff and I'll stop there.
We've had a lot of dialogue this evening and some of it has been emotional. And I'm going to start off with something real positive because I'm going to be participating in the Christmas parade. I'm going to get to wave at everybody. I don't know which vehicle I'm going to be in as of right now, as of this evening, but I don't ever miss it. So I will be a participant once again this year. You know, as I hear everyone again, community service started for me as far as city council, 13 years before I ran, because I used to sit at that backseat. And you can attest to that because there were several council members on the dais and they were different. And I can remember under the leaderships of the previous council, we'd be here till 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning because I served on the hospital board at that time and some of our agenda items from the hospital would get pulled because somebody had not done their research. And there were questions that probably should have been asked before coming to the meeting. It's not easy, but you also have the sensitivity, you have to listen. And I know that there's a lot of things that we cannot respond, especially with under oral communications to that regard. And some of the matters are not directly with the city. But with that being said, Milt Stowe, I'm very grateful to having served and worked with you even before I, you came, and I came on to city council. We have had the privilege of community service involvement in the activities that we've done. Having served on the nonprofit boards that I did and have, we came across numerous times. I want to thank you for having a conversation with my grandson out at the college. That to me, when he came up to me and he said, hey, I got to meet Milt Stowe today and I'm going to be very, very, very sensitive to this. My son, my grandson, started out at the college, pro basketball. He was headed in the right direction. Unfortunately, his heart physician told him he was not going to let him play college football, baseball, basketball. I apologize. I had a football player in there somewhere. But you know, the fact that he had a conversation with you, I want to thank you for the words that you gave him, especially when it pertained to the heart. It's a different world and this is a young man that had every vision of being recruited and had already made the team to play basketball. His high school career onto college, but it halted immediately. But he didn't stop there. The words that you gave him were to continue in the kinesiology program for the sports medicine, which is something that he hasn't stopped. And now he's going on to filling out his applications to the USC's and the colleges that provide it and see which one will accept him. So I want to thank you for that as a grandma. Okay, as a grandma, because he's not my son. But with all of that being said, Councilmember Tate, I know you're very active with the Zonta and you're not going to stop. You're just going to be doing a lot of other things. So I want to thank you. Yes, we graduated from the same class, Minachi. All right. I'm Minachi Diehard here, okay? Right, Amy? So with that being said, there are a lot of things that are coming up in the community in the future, but I want to thank each and every one of you. I won't go into a lot of the thank yous with staff because I periodically send a text to the city manager to direct it out to staff because they are appreciated and their work does not go unnoticed. And I don't want to cry, so I'm going to give it over to, to the city manager.
Who has similar feelings. Well, first one is just a couple of notes and a couple of things over the last couple of weeks that, you know, you've heard the phrase, city never sleeps and it's just not Vegas. The city never sleeps, as the council will know. Often I wait until 8 o'clock to let you know what incidents happened over the, over the evening. It seems that that's when the majority of it decides to happen. But just appreciate all the diligence in all departments. Thanksgiving Day, Public Works out fixing a water main. And we had a joke amongst ourselves, Happy Thanksgiving to some of us. Some of us are waist deep in mud and trying to make sure that water continues to serve the community. So appreciate Public Works being out on Thanksgiving, plus all of the public safety folks that do that as well. And, and I want to bring special attention, especially to the incident that happened at Sierra View where someone was intent to do suicide by cop and had the note on them. And I just want to express gratitude to the chief and the training that they provide officers, that they were able to de-escalate that situation that had a specific result in mind and was able to avoid it. So I want to acknowledge that and the fine work that the, that the PD continues to do to try to train its personnel. And that was one example where that training was able to end in a better result than sometimes you read about and hear about. Coming up this next, certainly with the parade, Leadership Porterville is doing their local government day this week. So it was great to see them introduce themselves and with the parade. And then we have our annual employee luncheon next week, which I hope the council will be able to kind enough to participate with. And I guess that kind of leads to, to Milt. You know, I was, I was 25 when I met Milt. I was a, yeah, and I was asked to, I'd played volleyball, but I'd never refereed it. And so they said, they were looking for girls volleyball referees. And so I said, okay. And so I got paired. I couldn't have asked for a better, I got paired with the most, the least experienced person got paired with the most experienced. And so I got paired with Milt and they sent us to all the hardest games. We did Porterville Minachi, we did Exeter Lemoore, we did Hanford Lemoore, we did Wasco Delano. And, and, and Milt almost ended that game because they were throwing money at us. So, so that's when I first met him. And, you know, it was, we had time in the car together to talk about things and I knew of him, like I worked at Burton, I was a personnel guy. I was hearing about the city and it was kind of interesting hearing about all those, all those, what was happening at the city. And I never imagined I'd be a part of it. And then just by circumstances, ended up at the city. I wasn't supposed to be here, but I did. Obviously God had a purpose for that. And then he had the opportunity for, for me to work together with Milt again. And I, and, and even though I, he would say he would, he would call me boss, he was the boss. I, there was his, his experience in this community. I, I talk, I hear all the time about, you know, I've known him since he was a kid and he helped me play ba-, you know. I, I wish you'd known me as a kid, so my baseball skills might have been better. You certainly helped my son and for that I am thankful. But you've helped many folks and you helped me, you helped me become a good manager. I was brand new first year and, you know, really mentored me and, and then that, that's continued on. And I know you're one of my 10th and, and always will be. So just, you're very kind words, but those are certainly undeserved. They are, they were because you gave them first. And, and with that, you have all of the, all of the honor and appreciation of the staff. And, and I say this, that just thank you for all that you've done.
Fernando, would you like to say anything?
The lawyer wants to really quick.
Okay.
And I won't be, and I'm going to make it really quick because I know, I know there's a lot on the line.
Let's go, let's go back that way then. I just want to say I've known Milt since, basically I started my, you know, my legal career here in the valley when I, when I was 28 years old. I, I knew him from almost the beginning because he was, he was, either knew him through Porterville or Tulare and then Porter, back to Porterville again. So I just wanted to, to thank him for being such an incredible inspiration to, to me and to, and I know to everybody else that's here. I did want to say that, you know, I, one thing I, I know that's never, always been the thing about Milt is that he has always and always will, he leads with his heart. He does everything with his heart. He has the biggest heart of anybody I know. In fact, I am convinced that that's actually the real reason why he needed another heart. Because he plum, used it for everything, let it guide him, did it with, everything with it and plum wore it out and needed another one. So I just wanted to say thank you so much. It's been an absolute joy and, and you are going to be missed. Thank you.
I'm going to miss you, but I know where you live. I have your number. Okay.
And just one last thing, and I want to express my gratitude and the staff's gratitude and I, and I think I can speak for the council in this regard to Councilmember Tate. So when, when she took the dais, there was a fair amount of uncertainty politically and obviously as you, as the community's come to learn about. So there was a lot of stuff going on in the background that wasn't great. And so I appreciate the grace and the, and the patience and the, and the willingness to learn and to try to understand things. It was a very uncertain time when you assumed office. So I just want to say thank you for that and it's been a real pleasure and, and real stabilizing force in that very uncertain time that we were in.
Thank you. Okay. It is 8:30 and the meeting is adjourned. Who won?